I'd like to call this meeting of the Westland City Council to order, please. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, tonight led by Angela Casey, Kendall Davis, and Tiana Gilder, the three students from Adams Elementary.
(inaudible)
If you'll stay right there, Councilman Hart will be right down to talk to you for a minute.
All right, why don't you turn around so everybody can see you? I wouldn't guess, you a little nervous? It's okay, me too. We'll get through this, all right? So, we do have Kendall and Tiana here, Angela couldn't make it, so we'll go ahead and catch up with her, but I got some information on Kendall and Tiana, they're from Adams Elementary School, right here in town, of course. So Kendall, Kendall likes a few things, she likes science, singing, arts and drawing, her favorite food is steak and macaroni and cheese, I think that's most of us. And her favorite holiday, and I like this, her favorite holiday is Thanksgiving, it's my favorite holiday, too. Why is Thanksgiving your favorite holiday?
Because the food.
Because the food. I always like it because my only requirements are, I just get up, make a lot of food, eat it, and watch football, and that's usually pretty good for me. It's my favorite holiday as well. Now, Tiana? You can just nod up and down if you want, that's fine. Tiana's favorite class is math, and she really loves singing, it's one of her hobbies. That's what you wrote, anyway. Oh! Her favorite food is, she really doesn't know, so I guess she likes them all, and her favorite movie is Truth or Dare. When she gets older, she wants to be a doctor, and she specifically said a brain surgeon. Now, I'm telling you, if I could crack open a couple people's heads and see what they're thinking, I'd be interested in that, too. She says she likes to have fun, and she's very goofy, and we're really glad to have you here, so I got some certificates for you, I'm gonna hand you these, they're gonna ask your principal to come up and say something about you, maybe she can filter some of this. Tiana. And Kendall, here you are. Let's go hold those up. Ms. Ailey, you wanna come up here and say something?
Hello, everybody. I didn't know I was gonna say a few words, but I just have to say, these two wonderful young ladies here represent Adams very well, they are so helpful, they're always wanting to do anything they can to help anybody else out, and we appreciate them very much, and we appreciate you all for inviting them here.
Well, a lot of times, when the kids come up and do the Pledge of Allegiance, sometimes it's the high point of the day, so we look forward to it as well. So if I can, could you get the friends and family, parents, come up here, we're not gonna drill you, we're just gonna get a picture with you and the kids. But if you walk really slow, I might ask you questions. Anybody else? All right, well, oh, there they go, thank you. I'll get that.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
Present.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Londo.
Here.
President Godbell.
Present.
A quorum is present.
We'll start off with announcements and presentations. State Representative Coleman.
Thank you, City Council, I'm Kevin Coleman, your State Representative, always a pleasure to be here. Our office is always happy to serve the citizens and residents of the 16th District, which is the city of Westland and city of Wayne. I just wanted to give you our office phone number again, so you can be in contact with us if need be. Our Lansing office phone number is (517) 373-2576. Our email address, if we can ever serve you, is kevincoleman@house.mi.gov, and that's a great way to get ahold of us. I also wanna announce that our next coffee hour is coming up, April 8th, which is the second Monday, it's always the second Monday of every month, it's gonna be at 9:00 a.m. at Big Boy, on Wayne Road, right at Wayne and Hunter, and that's in conjunction with Senator Geis and Commissioner Glenn Anderson from Wayne County. Quickly, a couple of the things we've been working on, we've extended FOIA, we've passed through the House extending FOIA, which is Freedom of Information Act, to the legislature. So, that's gonna try to add some transparency to state government, which actually we haven't had a whole lot of in the past, so that's something that we're working on, hopefully that'll get through the Senate, and the governor will sign that. We also worked on some civil asset forfeiture reform, to make sure that people who are, whose assets get seized by police departments, that those assets will be returned if they're not charged with a crime. So, that brings a little more transparency to that as well. And as you know, our governor, Governor Whitmer, has announced that she has her proposed budget, which has been covered quite a bit in the media, and I know the gas tax is probably the thing that we've heard the most about, our office has been getting, received a lot of phone calls and a lot of letters about it, and just wanted to kinda update the community and city council, and let you know that, while the gas tax is a pretty high number, my prediction, and my predictions aren't always right, but I do think that number will come down quite a bit, once we get to a final budget, so my plan is to come back next month or the month after, once we get closer to approving the final budget and updating you again, so I appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
Close announcements and presentations, and move on to citizens' questions or input on the agenda. Citizens will be recognized before the business of the meeting commences to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Citizens are asked to limit their questions or input to three minutes. Is there anyone on my right? Mrs. McKinney?
On the consent calendar, item F, 64,431 for digital signs, and I'm, the way this looks, it's at the affected Jefferson Barnes Activity Center, and we have a problem because the handicap parking has not been corrected, we need it, and if it doesn't get done soon, I'll be turning it into the U.S. government, because that breaks the ADA laws. And on item J, it says something about secondhand dealers and junk dealers, can you specify what that is exactly? Is that the people that pick up stuff and then turn it in, or is it actually a dealer? That's it.
Anyone on my left? Yes?
First, item number I, approval of the Planning Assistance Grant for a Traffic Safety Campaign. Is this, is this a grant that is for money coming to the city, I'm assuming, or are we awarding a grant? And if that's the case, why isn't our, is our grant writer gonna be part of this decision? And also, on the end of the agenda, the, in the council reports, I'm hoping that there will be a straightforward answer from our city attorney regarding Councilwoman Tasha Green's input, there's been plenty of time, so I just don't wanna hear any beating around the bush, thank you.
What on my right? Mr. Graham?
Richard Graham from Westland, and also with Move Westland Forward. Per the last gentleman's comment, the last agenda item, it would be great to get an update on that, based on Councilwoman Green's item from the previous meeting. Under vouchers, Page 4 Personnel Department, Mayor Wild, for $1,632.68. What was that for, what was that expenditure for? Page 15 on the vouchers, to trust an agency, for the final payment, for Detroit Red Wings alumni of $3,000. What was that for, and if the total amount is known? Next is new business items 1 through 4, regarding Taylor Towers and the study session, it was, I believe, last Monday, which I was able to attend. It's really great news that the city will be pulling money out of that property now, and not over the next 15 to 30 years, based on the refinance that is, that is going on. Question, what is the current monthly payment? And secondarily, what is the approximate future monthly payment, after the refinance that is happening? The encouraging news is, according to the study session, $3.1 million will be going into the Capital Improvement Fund, and $450,000 will be going into the General Fund. These are unbudgeted, it's not in the fiscal, this fiscal year, so in general, this is new money. What are the plans for this money, after so much has been taken away over the last 10 years? More police and fire employees, a rec center, recycling program, get that back on stable footing, or finally, maybe handicap swings in our parks. Lots of money there, and hopefully it will be put to good use. Thank you.
What on my left? What on my right? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments on the agenda, and move on to the consent calendar, is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Hart. There were a few questions on the consent calendar. Joanna, on item F?
Through the council president, that is for two exterior digital signs, one at Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center, the other at Kaylee Park, and the funding is from the Norway Park CDBG line item in the community development budget.
Then on item I? Well?
Good evening, City Council, this is a pass-through grant that will flow from SEMCOG to the city, and we will issue the funds with, to OHM after they complete the work and provide receipts to the city. OHM wrote the grant on behalf of the city, they also helped a couple other communities around Wayne County, as part of this grant as well, and were successful.
Thanks. Then on item J, Mr. Fasson?
Thank you. Yes, the secondhand dealers and junk dealers, introduction of ordinance 220-A-3, is being an update for what we used to call pawnbrokers, so these secondhand dealers are pawnbrokers, and the legislative change that happened out of Lansing adds that term, and so we're adding it to our ordinance, and similarly, this ordinance captures a whole series of state legislative provisions dealing with misappropriated property and hold orders on that property, and how the police are to interact with these pawnbrokers or secondhand dealers. So, this introduction is to have our ordinance catch up to the changes that were made by the state legislature, and became effective earlier this year.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the council? Councilman Hammond?
Council President, I just had a question with regards to item G, to the chaired administration, if they could touch on what we're entering into today, and the reason for it.
Here? Ramsey?
Yes, Council President, the administration were recommending to add another consultant on board, and which is Hennessy Engineering out of Downriver. This is due to the workload and the staffing levels that we have at this time. As you know, last year, we have recommended over $6 million worth of infrastructure improvement projects, and with the workload that's out there, we believe it's in the best interest of the city to have a second consultant on hand, where we could use on an as-needed basis. This is in addition to Orchard Hills Midline.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the council? Any discussion? Any discussion? Councilwoman Green?
There was a question regarding the question at the bottom of the agenda item, a few people asked, relevant to my question to the city attorney. The question was posed on February 11th, and many of you who watched the last council meeting, or who are aware, know that I did not get a response from the, anyone within the city or the city attorney for more than a month. And so, you see this item on the bottom of the agenda, or the last page of the agenda, because on last week Wednesday, our council packets are normally distributed to council members every, the Wednesday before our council meetings occur. And so, in light of the fact that our council packet was becoming due, I sent an email once again to everyone within the city, including the city attorney and the clerk's office, asking that my question be placed on the agenda. The question on the agenda, you'll notice, is in a smaller font, and there is no date. So what occurred is, I responded and asked that the font be increased of my question to the font of the size of the rest of the agenda, and that it be dated for February 11th, to clarify that I had not received a response. And that was on March 13th. So, on March 14th, the city attorney responded, and he, I have his letter here in front of me, but I won't read it, because it's a two-page letter, but just to sum up his response to my question, which actually, I made that question many months ago, and with no response, but the question that I received on March 14th was that the city attorney has no duty to any individual, rather to the city as a whole, so he is not obligated to act, intervene, or even respond, in this man, as it relates to this matter, unless he is asked to do so, not by a member of council, regardless of the circumstance, but by what he said was the city. So I'm assuming, because it was not clear, that was not clarified, I'm assuming that either the, under the mayor's direction, or under the direction, the direction of the entire city council, or possibly the majority of the city council, but regardless of what was occurring, he has no duty to act at all as a personal, in any fashion, to any of us, without, without the entire council or the city, I assume. So, to answer your question, that is the update. And, and in all fairness, he did invite me to, at the close of his letter, he invited me to, he stated that he would be happy to facilitate a meeting with the mayor, President Godbell, and the deputy mayor, each who have been directly involved in what has been occurring with the bias, instances of bias, or retaliation or bullying on one or more occasions. He stated that he would be happy to facilitate a meeting, but having told me that he has no obligation to act on my behalf in any regard, and that he is the, his legal obligation is to the city, I am exploring my next step, as it relates to that offer, so thank you.
Mr. Fasson?
Council President, I know you have a motion on the table-
Correct.
-for the consent calendar, so it's not appropriate for me to respond at this time, and further explain what's actually said in my letter, I will do that during my city attorney comments.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the consent calendar? Any further discussion on the consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. The minutes of the regular meeting held on-
The minutes of the regular meeting held on March 4th, 2019. Minutes of the study session held on March 11th, 2019. The approval of the bid for professional water main replacement services. Administration recommended the low bidder, Bidigere Contractors, in the amount of $83,847. Approval of bid for professional joint and crack sealing services. Administration recommended the low bidder. Michigan Joint and Ceiling Incorporated, total amount $337,100. Approval of bid for Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center HVAC Improvement Project. Administration recommended Temperature Services Incorporated, in the amount of $68,248. Approval of bid for Norway Exterior Digital Signs Project. Administration recommended praise signs, amount $64,431. Approval of agreement with Hennessy Engineers Incorporated, to provide professional engineering services on a non-exclusive-as-needed basis. The mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Approval of request to reprogram CDBG home and NSP funds as follows, from 19-11 Norway demolition, $30,000, to 19-03 homeowner emergency rehabilitation, $30,000. Approval of Planning Assistance Grant for a Traffic Safety Campaign, from the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. The city's share is $4,537.50. Introduction of Ordinance 220-A-3, an ordinance to adopt Chapter 26, Article 1, Sections 26-1 through 26-8 of the Westland City Code, to regulate and license secondhand dealers and junk dealers, and to prescribe penalties for violation of these provisions. Adoption of Ordinance 188-A-4, an ordinance to amend Chapter 50, Article 4, Divisions 1, Sections 50 through 102 through 50-102A of the Westland City Code, to provide for the manner in which consumer fireworks may be used and displayed. This item was introduced March 4th, 2019. Adoption of Ordinance 177-A, to amend Section 110, 2.1 of the Westland City Code, to establish a temporary moratorium on applications for permits or licenses to establish new massage parlors. This item was introduced March 4th, 2019. Adoption of Prepared Resolution authorizing the disposition of two properties, 32212 Antonagan Court, and 35070 June, acquired under the Neighborhood Stabilization Community Development Block Grant, and home programs to eligible home buyers. The mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign the quitclaim deed for these properties on behalf of the city, and the Director of Housing and Community Development is authorized to sign the closing documents for the sale of these properties on behalf of the city. The last item approved is the approval of the 2018 Planning Commission Annual Report. This report was approved by the Planning Commission, March 5th, 2019.
Before we move on to new business, I would like to recognize the people, Mr. Hennessy and Joan Hennessy, from our new, the engineering firm. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say good evening to the mayor and council, and we appreciate the opportunity to work with you, and to give you a quick little background about our business, we've been in business 47 years, our core competency, and all we really do in municipal engineer, is municipal engineering, in a sense, and that really gives us an advantage, and gives us a deep bench within our organization. Some of the things that make us a little unique is, when the downturn happened, and the Obama dollars came in, NSP program and things like that, Wayne County went out for a bid to manage their CDBG funds and NSP programs, and we rewarded that over seven other consultants, and we managed over $38 million with the county with that, and so we look forward with the opportunity to work with you folks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
New business, item one. Adoption of Prepared Resolution to confirm the city of Westland's authority to sign the guarantee of the loan between the Westland Taylor Corporation and Burkadia Commercial Mortgage LLC. If approved, the mayor and the city clerk are authorized to execute the guarantee and necessary documents on behalf of the city.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Johnson. There was a question in regards to 1 through 4, Mr. Fasson?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, these four, next four items on your agenda are all interrelated, and go back to the study session that was held a week ago. Westland Taylor Corporation is going out for some refinancing for Taylor Tower, you may recall, five years ago or so, it went out and did some refinancing with, at that time it was Comerica Bank, allowing it to do considerable capital projects at the facility. That note has, is coming due, therefore, the need to refinance again, a great opportunity here with Burkidia Commercial Mortgage LLC, and a Fannie Mae product, to go out for 15 years of new financing for $11,680,000. As part of that process, to go in with the loan application process, these four items are necessary for them to be able to proceed. The first is an acknowledgement by the city council that this transaction is proceeding, and that the city will confirm its authority to perform any obligations that may occur, should there be a default in this matter, and obviously authorizes the mayor and the clerk to execute the guarantee, and all the necessary documents. There's also some land that needs to be conveyed to square up the property, that's your second item on your agenda, is a quitclaim deed to transfer some property that we really thought was already inside the Westland Taylor Corporation ownership, only to find out with some title work that some lots were missing, so we're, the second item on new business is to square that up, that's the quitclaim deed. There is an agreement to, then, on how this transaction will proceed, because there's multiple parties involved. Westland Taylor Corporation is actually the applicant, Westland Housing Corporation is the member, if you will, of, that owns the Westland Taylor Corporation, so there's an agreement between the city council, Westland Housing Commission, and Westland Taylor Corporation, on how they will proceed on a going-forward basis. That's your third item, is a resolution relative to that agreement, and your fourth item is actually the approval of that specific agreement, with, again, authorizing the mayor and the clerk to sign. But, let me back up to item number one, which is this acknowledgement of the transaction and the obligations that the city would have under the loan guarantee, should there be a default. The financing will result in a payment from Westland Taylor Corporation to the city, to the city of Westland- As part of that process, to go in with the loan application process, uh, these four items are necessary for, for them to be able to proceed. Uh, the first is, uh, an acknowledgement by the city council that this, um, transaction is proceeding and that the city will confirm its authority to perform any obligations that may, uh, occur should there be a default, uh, in this matter. And obviously authorizes the mayor and the clerk to execute the, uh, a guarantee of, and all the necessary documents. There's also some land that needs to be conveyed to square up the property. That's your second item on your agenda, um, is a quitclaim deed to transfer some property that, uh, we really thought was already inside, uh, the Westland Taylor Corporation ownership, uh, only to find out with some title work that, uh, some lots were missing. So, we're, uh, the second item on new business is to square that up. That's the quitclaim deed. Um, there is an agreement to, then, on how this transaction will proceed, uh, because there's multiple parties involved. Uh, Westland Taylor Corporation is actually the applicant. Uh, Westland Housing Corporation is the, uh, uh, member, if you will, of, that owns Westland Taylor Corporation. So, there's an agreement between, uh, the city council, Westland Housing Commission, and Westland Taylor Corporation on how they will proceed on a going-forward basis. That's your third item, uh, is a resolution relative to that agreement. And your fourth item is actually the approval of that specific agreement, with, uh, again, authorizing the mayor and the clerk to sign. But, uh, I, let me back up to item number one, which is this acknowledgement of the transaction and the obligations that the city would have under the loan guarantee should there be a default. The financing will result in a payment from Westland Taylor Corporation to the city, to the City of Westland to pay off a second mortgage that was put in place five years ago when the, when the Comerica deal was done. Uh, also, there will be a payment to Comerica to clear their debt, and then there'll be money left over for Westland Taylor Corporation to do some additional work at the facility. There are no, uh, unlike five years ago when there were some required things that needed to be done, and, and those were all done. Um, at this point, we're talking about, uh, improvements to the project, to Westland Taylor, uh, Taylor Towers. That does not require, uh, these aren't required improvements, but necess- um, appropriate upgrades. Uh, I, I know there's HUD language on this, and Eileen, I'm screwing this up, I realize. But, uh, it may be appropriate to hear from the, the chairman of, uh, Westland Taylor Corporation. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but before I do, there was a question from the audience as to what the current mortgage rate is per month and what the anticipated one will be. Currently, we pay just over fifty-six thousand dollars a month to Comerica. The projected new mortgage will be just under eighty-six thousand dollars a month. Sounds like a big disparity, however. The eighty-six thousand dollars a month will include the pilot, insurances on the property, and also, uh, it will, it will take away the interest-only payment we've been paying the city every quarter. So, in reality, the building will realize over a five thousand dollar savings a month.
Thanks. Are there any other, are there any questions from the council on this item? Any questions from the council? Any dissent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Through the chair to the city attorney. Um, you all have been copied on emails that I sent asking that my microphone remain on at the start of the meeting, throughout the duration of the meeting due to the council president repeatedly turning my microphone off to publicly embarrass me, retaliate, and disrespect me. You all got the meeting. I made sure I sent it again today. I sent it repeatedly last week. I've, I sent it, um, two weeks before. And my microphone, he has turned my microphone off again. I just had to wait for him to turn it back on. So, is there nothing in light of your letter and everybody knowing what's going on? Is there nothing that the ci- and, and please define for me, and you can do this in your closing statement, who is the city that has to give you authorization? But as it relates to my microphone, I would like a response now because there is nothing in our policy, Robert's Rules of Order, or the Charter that prevents us as elected officials and mature adults to sit here with our microphones on and, and adhere to Robert's Rules of Order and allow him to give us the floor without him turning my microphone off repeatedly?
I... Do you want to address it, or I can? Go ahead, Mr. Fasson.
I was asked a specific question, and, and, uh, the good councilwoman did say I could comment in my, in my city attorney comments in light of the fact that there's a motion and a second pending. I'll hold my comments till the city attorney's, uh, comments. Uh, with respect to the microphone issue, that's not controlled by the city attorney. It's not controlled by administration. We, we wouldn't have any, uh, ability to impact either of those, uh, from a procedural standpoint.
Through the chair to the city attorney, I would, or, excuse me, this, uh, the council president. Can you give me an explanation in terms of why you continue to turn my microphone off and why you have done so this meeting?
I, I will be glad to, okay? The microphone system, as it exists, uh, is set up so that when you push your button on your microphone, a light flashes on this panel so that I know to recognize you. If the microphone is left on all the time, I do not know when to recognize you when you want to speak at a meeting. So, there, so that if the microphone is left on, you would not be recognized for any comments because I would not know when you wish to be recognized. Every council member, the mayor, the directors, or, or not the directors, but everybody at the dais, uh, microphone button, when it gets depressed, a light goes on. If I'm, if it happens to be on another screen, the screen flashes so that I know that someone likes to be, wants to be recognized. At that point, I turn their microphone on so that they can speak, or, uh, after I recognize them, so that they can speak for their comments. And I'll have further comments on it at the end of the meeting as well.
Through the chair to the city, or, excuse me, the council president. You just recognized me without my, when you turned my microphone off. I've been to several municipality meetings, and the microphones come on and they stay on for the entire meeting. And I can easily, I just got your attention by telling you that I had a dissent or a discussion to, uh, and you, you recognized me. The issue here is, you, while you're talking about everybody else up here, you don't disrespect them like you disrespect me. You don't, you don't cut their microphones off when they're talking. You have not let them do their entire closing statement with the microphones off, having to watch a meeting back to learn that you did that to them. You don't treat them the way you treat me. So, I want my microphone on, and if I have to send a smoke signal to get your attention, I'm willing to do that. I don't feel that you treat me fairly. I have made that more than clear to the city. So, I want my microphone left on, and if by chance you state that you are, you don't see my light flashing, I will make sure that I will get your attention before we move on, and I think that is more than fair. And there is nothing in the policy that gives you the right to control these microphones. So, you cannot take it upon, especially now that you have used it in a retaliatory manner. I don't want you controlling my microphone, and I will adhere to Robert's Rules of Order and get your attention as needed. Thank you.
There is, there is currently a motion on the floor and support. Is there any dissent to the motion? Any dissent to the motion? Hearing no dissent, motion-
Yes, I have dissent.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
We'll go for a roll call, though.
Councilwoman Green?
Isn't there a discussion before a roll call?
I called for a discussion twice.
I had to go through the chair about my microphone. Now, I'm going to, I would like to discuss this issue-
Councilwoman Green, you're out of order, please.
No, I'm not. I'm going to, you didn't call for, what I asked for was about my microphone. Now, I would like the opportunity to address this item.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. So, for the community, I would like to, um, just express the fact that this refinance is being done in an effort to save money for the property, and as it was explained to city council for potentially the city. I, uh, having an extensive background in property management and construction, I am definitely in support of, uh, measures similar to this that save money. So, I want to state that for the record. Um, I will not be in support of items one through four, and so that there is, um, the narrative is not unclear in terms of why I will not be supporting these measures, although it is a cost sa- appears to be a cost-saving measure. There are several nonprofits and organizations that are affiliated with item number one and the rest of them that will be doing apparently roll calls for. Uh, but during the study session that we had last week, I learned it, information that appeared to me to be a red flag. Now, I am one of several, seven council members. So, we, we all have the individual right to vote as we choose. I will not be going on record as a yes for these items, and it is not anything against the people who manage the property, any of the, uh, the, the residents, which is, it is a senior citizen community, and from what I understand, it is being maintained very well. So, I have no, um, qualms about that. But to go on record as a, um, to vote yes in terms of this, I'm not able to do so due to the information that was uncovered at the city council, uh, study session last week, which I just want to explain to you during the study session. The Westland Taylor Corporation, the Westland Housing Commission, and there is another nonprofit, uh, known as the Liberator Development Group. These nonprofits were formed and are ran or, um, seated by members who are currently either executives of the city council, or of the City of Westland, friends, family, mayoral-appointed commissioners, and employees. So, the Westland Taylor Corporation is made up of Eileen DeHart, who, uh, is, uh, Eileen DeHart, who spoke at the podium, Andy Spisak, Joanne Campbell, who runs the entire housing development department, Dan Block, who is a previous Plante Moran employee and now our finance director. Um, they are the management company that makes up Westland Taylor Corporation. The ownership or the, uh, nonprofit or entity, government entity that owns Westland Taylor Corporation is made up of the Housing Commission. This is made up of Eileen DeHart, Andy Spisak, Joanne Campbell, Dan Block, who I just mentioned, in addition to Mark Neal, who's, uh, Elizabeth Forbes, Sabrina Gaddy, Bollinger, Miriam Katie, and Dolores Flowers. So, again, I've already stated the relationship these people have to these nonprofits. There's another nonprofit that is doing the development, involved in the development and, uh, um, re, uh, reconstruction and selling of homes. That is made up of Keisha Sanders Hadu, Arthur Warren, who is a multiple mayoral-appointed commissioner and runs the Democrat, Westland Democratic Club. He's also on the Norwayne, uh, Committee, uh, Henry Johnson, Roger Shiflett, Ben Lipinski, and Shannon Ziegler. And in addition to these people being currently, um, either friends, employees, executives, commissioners, uh, or some type of way attached to people in this city, there are people at that housing, um, apartment complex that are relatives of some of these people. So, some of their family works at this complex. So, again, I am not stating that, um, I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but I have to be able to sleep at night, and when I do business, this, to me, there's more, too many unanswered questions for me to vote yes. Um, on a, the, the City of Taylor was just raided by the FBI last month for housing-related issues. It was in the, it was on the news and in the newspaper, that raid took place for housing. Then they raided another gentleman, four days, through two, three, four days later, for housing. That gentleman, it has housing contracts in the City of Westland. And also, some of these people on these nonprofits contribute to campaign accounts of the people who are sitting here and have been asked to vote, as they did on previous housing contracts that we- I had no idea that these, these people have contributed to their ca- campaign accounts. And instead of them recusing themselves, they vote yes on these contracts. I don't have a relationship to anybody. I actually did not grow up in the City of Westland, but I have integrity. And I'm not saying anybody else doesn't, but I'm not going to be on anybody's watch list. So, I'm not going, um, on record as a yes, and, and everybody else can do what they would like to do, but I want to congratulate the, these, the, the commissions who were, um, involved in terms of the management. I have no, nothing bad to say about the management, it's just too many what appears to possibly be conflicts of interest or unanswered questions, so I will not be supporting. Thank you.
Mayor? The city?
Are, are you in the middle of a roll call vote, or are you in discussions, Council President?
We're still in, I guess we're still in discussion. I had called for it twice, but we'll, we'll go on through discussion.
If I could, Council President, obviously, this is a, it's a very, uh, complex transaction. And, and for those that, that weren't on council, when we did the original, uh, refinance with this building, um, I believe it was about five years ago, there was quite a bit of work that went into the first finance, and it was even, I was surprised it took just about as much work to go into the refinance five years later. Um, so, I think that, obviously, Councilwoman Green certainly has a right to her opinion on, on this topic and any other topic, but I think that the amount of work that went into this, this is a HUD building that's got a HUD contract that was re-upped in the last, in the last, um, refinance, which is the, that, it's a HAP contract that, that is a subsidy for most of the people that work there. This has been through a lot of legal, uh, legal, um, a lot of expense has been spent on this legally. Um, we have the, the gentleman in the room with us from Borcadia, Colin, who's going to be, uh, who's researched the Fannie Mae refinance of this. Obviously, Eileen's been part of this, um, both refinance, the original finance, the refinance. Teresa Schultz, who's the manager of the building, has been through both of these so far. She can speak to the amount of money that the city reinvested into the property in the first refinance and the amount of money that's been set aside for, in this finance, to make sure the building is properly cared for. Then, obviously, Mike, Mike Schwartz is in the audience, too. So, like I said, I, I just want council to understand the amount of effort, work, and the people that are involved in this are people of integrity. So, we just have to be very careful with our opinions so that we don't slander those individuals that have, that are working hard for the city. Most of those names that were mentioned are the people that have been appointed to the Westlands Housing Commission already. So, and then the folks that were mentioned from the Liberator Group and the homes that are being rehabbed have absolutely nothing to do with Taylor Towers or this transaction. So, we just need to be clear on that. So, if any of the council members need additional clarification, I think that we have the folks in the audience tonight that can offer that. Thank you.
Mr. Fasson?
Since we're still in discussion, let me, uh, advise the council that, um, Borcadia Capital has a law firm in Virginia that specializes in this area that has been working on this transaction and making sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. They have been the interface with Fannie Mae, and Westland Taylor Corporation is using the Dykema Law Firm to, again, make sure that all the i's are dotted, t's are crossed, and interfacing with Mishtha. So, um, while we haven't discussed all of the back-room work that's being done and who's doing the work, I thought it might be useful for you to understand that those elements, uh, have occurred.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green?
No.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Londo?
Yes.
President Godbout?
Yes.
The motion passes. New business, item two. Adoption of prepared resolution to approve the conveyance of city-owned land north of and adjacent to Taylor Towers, three-six-five-zero-zero, Marquette, Westland, Michigan, four, four-eight-one-eight-five, by a quitclaim deed to the Westland Taylor Corporation. If approved, the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute the quitclaim deed to Westland Taylor Corporation.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion?
Are we doing a roll call?
Yes. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green?
No.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Londo?
Yes.
President Godbout?
Yes.
The motion passes. New business, item three. Adoption of prepared resolution to approve the agreement between the City of Westland, the Westland Housing Commission, and the Westland Taylor Corporation concerning the loan agreement between Westland Taylor Corporation and Borcadia Commercial Mortgage.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green?
No.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Londo?
Yes.
President Godbout?
Yes.
The motion passes. New business, item four. Approval of agreement between the City of Westland, the Westland Housing Commission, and the Westland Taylor Corporation concerning the loan agreement between the Westland Taylor Corporation and Borcadia Commercial Mortgage LLC. If approved, the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute the agreement and such other documents to carry out the transaction.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hammond. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green?
No.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Londo?
Yes.
President Godbout?
Yes.
The motion passes. New business, item five. Approval of proposed land division and combination for tax purposes only, parcel number zero-seven-three-zero-two-zero-two-three-seven-three-zero-zero, on the west side of Sheboygan, south of Grand Traverse, City of- city of Westland, PD number 2225. The Planning, the Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations and further directs the city attorney to draft the necessary land division resolution.
Motion by Councilman Londo. Is there support by Councilman Hart? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. I'm sorry, well, did you want to go through the proposal?
Yes, please, Council President, thank you. Mohamed Ayyou from the Planning Department. This is a city request being made to split a single city-owned parcel in the Norwain subdivision there on Sheboygan Court. This is an existing aerial or conditions showing the demolition or a vacant parcel there to the north. The previous aerial showed a building there. The city picked it up through the foreclosure program with the Wayne County Register of Deeds, and, not the Register of Deeds, I'm sorry, through their foreclosure program, demolished the house, and is now requesting to split it through that red line there in the form of the original plating of the land. As you mentioned, the administration and the Planning Commission unanimously is recommending approval of this to you. Thank you.
We'll move on to item six.
New business, item six is the approval of vouchers.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Londo. There were a couple of questions on the vouchers. Mr. Smith?
Yes, through the chair to Mr. Graham. Page four, the 1,632 is reimbursement for the mayor to attend the conference of mayors. Page 15, the final Detroit hockey payment of $1,500. The total was $4,500 that goes to the Detroit alumni, and those are paid from, by the proceeds from the event.
Any questions from the council? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to citizens' comments or requests. Citizens will be recognized at the end of the meeting immediately following the agenda item, approval of vouchers. Citizens are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. All citizens wishing to speak will be heard. Is there anyone on my left?
My name is Karen Kerrigan. I've been a resident of Westland since the late 1990s. I'm here to support Councilwoman Tasha Green, and I'm a member of Michigan United. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to address the council president, city attorney, Mayor Wild. You guys, unlike Bill, who's probably going to work forever, we're going to retire someday. And I think it's incumbent upon us, with all the challenges that we have at the city level, to support young leadership coming up. Disinfectant, the sunlight's the best disinfectant. I looked at your website, and we have 28 committees within the city of Westland. I implore you to put Tasha Green on some of those committees. She has a lot to offer. She worked really hard to get here. And I know I've been in politics a long time myself. I represent 30,000 workers throughout southeast Michigan out of UAW Local 600. We've supported your campaigns. Bill Johnson, he's, he's never going to retire, but he's from Local 900. I know you've been in public service yourself a long time, sir. I implore you, put aside anything that may begrudge us. I think there should be mentorship. I think that she has a lot to offer this committee. I implore you, I thank you for your time, I thank you, and thank you guys for your service.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Oscar. You guys have seen me before. Welcome from, or, excuse me, greetings from Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib's office. I wanted to thank everybody who came out this past Saturday to the little town hall that happened with State Senator Geis, Rashida, the Congresswoman, and Rep. Coleman. We do have one more that's going to be a coffee conversations, or, excuse me, Congress Coffee and Conversations this Thursday, March 21st, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. The place will be at the Maplewood Community Center in Garden City. The address for that is 31735 Maplewood Street, Garden City, and the zip is 48135. So look forward to having folks there. And then the only one legislative update is going to be the Congresswoman's bill that she's going to introduce, which is going to be the Preventing Credit Score Discrimination Auto Insurance Act of 2019. Insurance companies are using credit scores to determine rates for consumers. This is one of the factors that may lead to higher auto insurance rates for many residents in the 13th Congressional District. Congresswoman Tlaib has introduced the Preventing Credit Score Discrimination in Auto Insurance Act of 2019 that will prohibit auto insurance companies from using credit scores to determine state, to, excuse me, to determine rates. Rep. Tlaib introduced this bill with 25 other of her colleagues to protect consumers from rising rates. And that's all I have for updates. Thank you very much. Do I have any, or any questions? Nope. Excellent. Thank you.
One on my left? Anyone on my right? Yes, sir.
How you doing, everyone? My name is Deion Jordan here. I'm working out of State Representative Jewel Jones' office. We, obviously, he's in Easter right now for another council meeting tonight, but he wants to let you guys know that you do have our support as always, whatever you need. And a few updated, updates that we do have out of Lansing right now, a few, a few bills that did pass is House Bill 41112, alcohol warning signs to pregnancy women. It requires all establishments where liquor is sold to post a sign warning to, of all dangers of drinking while pregnant to the women in each liquor store that will be around. The next House bill that was passed was appropriation for wrongful imprisonment compensation fund. Appropriation is $10 million for FY 2019 to the wrongful imprisonment fund and adds attorneys general reporting permits to the statute. As of right now, we do not have any district updates right now, but we'll have those at the next council meetings for you all. So just wanted to tell you guys that, and have a good afternoon, good evening.
One on my left? Anyone on my right? Ms. Everett.
I would like to thank everyone who came out tonight to support Ms. Green. I have been a resident of this city over 60 years, so I'm old as most of you together. But I represent the southeast Westland community, and I hope my residents who are not here will look at this city council meeting and start your, started your report cards, because one of my proudest things about the southeast Westland community, we vote.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right?
Okay, I have a question about the project that's being done in Glenwood, right next to Chums. Did you go and look at it? Because it's not been touched in months, and it's dangerous, and it's right across from Wayne High, and spring is coming, and the kids get a little rowdy sometimes, and there's big holes that aren't covered. There's, it's a mess. So I'd like to know what's going on there.
One on my left?
Good evening, council. My name is Lori Wilson, and I'm a member of the southeast Westland Homeowners Association also. I represent myself because I was told by someone that they would no longer represent a dysfunctional group of people. Thank you.
One on my right?
Richard Graham from Westland, and also with Move Westland Forward. Actually, didn't have anything to speak about, but now have a lot of things to speak about. Some items from tonight, Hennessy was brought up. John Hennessy gave Mayor Wild $1,000 for his political campaign when he ran for mayor. Somebody brought up the housing development, the FBI, Taylor, mayor, the person, Shady Outwod, he gave thousands and thousands of dollars to Mayor Wild's failed congressional bid. So just, you know, public information, you can view it for yourself. Interesting that the new economic development director, the second meeting now, where's she at? Economic development is core to, core to our growth, but she doesn't seem to be here. I know it's not a requirement, but you would think, with the high-paying job and the advancement, she'd be here, but I guess not. Interesting that the city attorney has to facilitate a meeting with the mayor and a council person. Mayor Wild actually went on Councilwoman Green's Facebook page and made a comment, a publicity PR comment, about wanting to work together. Why does a lawyer that is very well-paid, and well should be, facilitating a meeting? Mayor Wild, you can't do that. I would assume after all these years, you could do something like that. A gentleman from the UAW mentioned about committees. Well, a lot of the committees remain unfilled. I put in an application for the committee, wanted to counsel people, actually, Council Pro Tem Hersberg is one of my sponsors, never heard anything. Mayor Wild doesn't fill positions in committees unless it's his select few. And the one I did was actually the Ethics Committee, that Mayor Wild has not filled and will not do since, I believe, Mayor Cicirelli, when she had that in office. But final closing comment really is, this is what happens, this has been happening for years, folks. It, it's been going on in these chambers. I've been coming for about three years. When I first started coming, my wife, my neighbor, we were bullied and intimidated by Council President Godbout. Mayor Wild lied about my family in this room. Papers by, I guess it's a Westland Democratic Club lead published things about me being a racist and my wife being a racist. I've heard from other council members, actually now a state representative, of how they've been handled within these chambers and actually outside of these chambers. This is nothing new. When we continue to vote for people like Mayor Wild and Council President Godbout, this is what we get. We get this to continue, and continue, and continue, and frankly, it won't end until we vote out people from Team Wild. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right?
Hi, my name is Go Ray here. I'm always on the go, and, you know, I've been kind of observing this the last few weeks about this microbone bit. You know, I want to tell you something, Galbo, it doesn't look good, because people see all this. I'm green, I know you're speaking up for yourself and advocating for yourself, but, you know, the bottom line, it does not look good. Because I hear people in here tonight talking about voting. Better think about it twice, because when it comes to voting time, people look at all that. I look at it too. And, you know, we need, the bottom line of it all is respect. Let's respect one another. Is, I don't see that in here. So I'm planning on going to Garden City this week, and hopefully, and mental health does matter, I'm going to try to reach out to that governor. But the insurance does matter for people. You're not driving your credit on the road, you're driving your car. Thank you.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? One else in the audience? Once again, Mr. Galbo, your nonverbal, your actions appalling. You should step down from your position immediately. You should resign. You rep, you're supposed to be representing this city. You do a horrible job. Horrible job. You should resign. And whoever did this, this is appalling too. This is belittling. Who, who wrote it? Who, who put this down at the very bottom in small print? I would, I would like to have an answer for that. And this should be exhibit one in the court case for you, because this is disrespectful. You should resign. Anyone on my left? Please, anyone on my left? Anyone on my right?
Good evening, council. Mayor Wild. Councilwoman Green, my husband and I have been residents of Westland since 1997. My sons grew up here, and we are here to support you.
Thank you.
I apologize, this is the first meeting I've ever been to, and it was after I saw your Facebook post. There's no way I could sit at home knowing you're going through this. This room should be full of people supporting you, because you are trying to do the right thing. I also want to mention, my husband and I got here, there weren't any agendas. I pulled the agenda up online. Your item that was at the bottom on the written paperwork is not even on the website. And this was updated 3:14 at 3:37 p.m. So it doesn't even appear on here at all. That is unacceptable. And I'm going to ask you, Ms. Hoff, you were once a new council member, you were once a new councilwoman. Why can't you embrace her and help her? Why can't you stop what you see going on? You have some influence, I'm sure. You've been here. This is your council sister. It doesn't look good for you to leave her out there by herself. Women have too much to go through to not work together, especially when they're in a position where they can make a change.
Is there anyone on my left? One on my right? We'll close citizens' comments and move on to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, City Council. Thank you, residents, for being here tonight. I'm going to make a couple of comments at the end on some of the things that were said here tonight, just, just to clarify a few things. But first of all, I want to talk, there were some good things that were on the agenda tonight, and while we, we spent a little bit of time talking about the refinance of Taylor Towers, that, that was a big lift for the city. It's something we've been working on for a long time. When, when the city forefathers built Taylor Towers over 40 years ago, they, they set it up in a way so that when the, using federal bonds, that when the building was paid off, it would revert back to the city, which it did about 10 years ago, and it, it put the city in a position during the middle of the recession to actually refinance it and bring in a lot of money to the city that we put into our capital improvement fund, which has funded a lot of the things that we've seen throughout the city over the last couple of years, like the renovation of the police department, purchasing a lot of fire equipment, police equipment, renovating a lot of buildings. So that money's been put to good use. The refinance tonight allowed us to take the rest of the equity out of the building, and that money is going to be transferred to the city per resolution. It goes to the capital improvement fund, but working with the city council, the city has a lot of, a lot of needs. has a lot of, a lot of needs, capital needs, service needs. This is one-time money, so we’ll work with, together with the council to make sure that that money’s used wisely because it’s going to have to last. The city will be in a position again to refinance this building maybe another 15 years or maybe even 30 years when it’s paid off. And the folks that are in these leadership chairs then will have the ability to do the same thing then. So, the folks that started Taylor Towers 40 years ago should be committed. It’s not too many times that you see a federally-funded program at the local level that has lasted this long and is still is working in excellent condition. So, the next thing is there was over $1 million worth of improvements that were approved by council tonight. One of them was the water main replacement project. It was close to $1 million. And this is going to replace over 4,000 feet of, listen to this, 70-year-old defective water mains on Cardwell Floral and Dearing. That’s over on the north end of town in one of, one of our oldest neighborhoods. It predates the city back to Nakan Mills days. The work’s going to be completed using the new non-invasive pipe bursting method. Under normal conditions, this project will start late in April and be completed by the end of July. The second one is something you’re going to see us do a lot more of, and this is something I want to applaud Ramsey and the DPS staff for. It’s preventative maintenance. We’re going to spend over $300,000 this year going through our roads that, you know, we’re going to, we’ll be talking a little bit later in the year about the roads that we’re going to replace and repair. But we’re going to spend about $300,000 this year putting into our roads to try to improve them to last longer. So, we know that some roads are beyond repair of preventative maintenance, but there’s a lot of roads that by doing some joint crack sealing that we can extend the life of those. So, and that’s something that’s going to be happening all throughout the city and you’ll see it as part of our neighborhood makeover program. I want to, I got apologized for my voice, I’ve been fighting a cold the last couple of days. I want to thank everybody that participated in our annual Hockey Night in Westland event. We had a Full House again and, kind of playing off the words, because our, the biggest guy that was out there was Full House, was from Full House, was that, was Dave Coulier. But the event was very well, we’re still pulling in our sponsorship dollars and we’ll be able to report what we made here shortly. This was our 10th year of this event and to date, we’ve raised over $200,000 for improvements backed into the Mike Madonna Arena. And this year, the funds are going to be funding, additional funding for a project that was approved in this year’s budget to fix up the lobby area. I want to thank our residents, I want to talk just for a second about the Westlands recycling program. I want to thank the residents that have continued to recycle, which is what we want you to do. We’re still asking you to put your recyclables in the blue containers, put those out to the curb. We’re picking those up, we’ve explained it to the residents in as many different manners as we can so far, but we’re going to continue to talk about it. We’ve mailed letters out to everybody’s house, we’ve got a PSA on cable, we’ve done interviews with the media, we have stuff on our website. We’re going to continue asking you to recycle. We’re still working behind the scenes to come up with a solution. Currently, we want to be 100% transparent on this and we’re encouraging our surrounding communities to do the same, is that right now, that stuff in your blue container is going to a landfill. We want you to know that, we’re not happy with it. At the end of the day, we’re working on trying to come up with another solution to recycle that material. I’m going to present to council a budget April 1st, and in that budget, I’m going to have additional money set in there for recycling, although at this point, we’re still trying to figure out exactly where that money’s going to go. So we know at $80 a ton, we can take it to the recycling center, but we know that’s about a $400,000 annual outlay. So, we’re hoping that we have a solution to bring to council before April 1st. If not, we will put money in the budget so that we can continue working towards it. And I counsel that, I think during our budget processing, during our budget session, we’ll be having a lot of talk on recycling. So, we’re hoping to have an update for that in the near future. But thank you, everybody in Westland that is continuing to recycle. I mentioned the budget, the finance team, the administrative team, everybody’s been working behind closed doors to prepare the budget that we have to have to council by April 1st. We’re planning on doing our overview to council on April 1st before your council meeting. We will have the budgets to you prior to that if they’re ready. And I know that we are getting close, we do have a few things to finish up though. Ms. McKinnon, you asked about the renovation of the Old Chums Donuts. We’re having a hard time getting in touch with the person that was doing that, so I don’t know if they’ve lost their financing or lost their way, but we’ll continue to do it. And if they’re not going to finish the project, then Neighborhood Services will work to keep it cleaned up like we did in the past. It was vacant for a long time. The question was brought up why some of the department heads aren’t here tonight. The way that we do it is, there’s certain department heads that are here every night or every council meeting. The rest of them are based on if they have something on the agenda that night or if there’s a topic that we know we’re going to be discussing. So, other than that, we don’t have enough chairs for everybody and so we bring in people that have something to do with the agenda. So. All right, well, I’m glad that I could bring a little bit of humor here tonight, to tonight’s thing. So, obviously, we have plenty of chairs, but at the end of the day, we have the department heads that are here that ask, that are part of the agenda and also folks like finance that are here to talk about vouchers. Mr. Graham asked a couple of questions tonight, and for those of you that are joining us for the first time, Mr. Graham has spent the last four years of his life accusing me of everything, calling me every name. He’s got some sort of bizarre obsession with me that he enjoys what he does. I don’t like it. My family doesn’t like it. The difference between him and I is that I know my children watch this, they watch this, they watch how I act when he says the things that he says about me. They watch if I respond to the things he says about me on Facebook. And at the end of the day, I’m thinking his kids probably do too. As far as the printing that’s on the bottom of the agenda, the agenda’s put together by the city clerk. City clerk is not here tonight. Mrs. Hoff is not, as councilwoman. She’s the deputy city clerk and she’s sitting here tonight for the clerk. My last things is, I want to just touch base on some of Mrs. Green’s comments here tonight. And for those of you that are here for the first time, I want you to know that I like Mrs. Green. And when I say that, it’s not a publicity thing, it’s when I post on her Facebook page, it’s because I do consider us friends. So Mrs. Green has asked for a lot of stuff here and if you have the agenda, you can see on the bottom of it. I sent an email out to Mrs. Green saying that I would facilitate a meeting in my office, which is what I put on her Facebook post because we text each other and we call each other. That some of the issues that she brought forward are outside of the mayor. It’s city council, it’s her colleagues, and she asked several questions of the city attorney. Mrs. Green and I, we, when she came on council, and what I love about her, she’s passionate and she’s ambitious. And when she got on city council, she wanted to be on a lot of different things that city council people don’t serve on. And we’ve talked about that. And her and I spoke at month, a few months ago, or a few, we spoke at length a few months ago here at City Hall. And I thought that we cleared the ear of any differences that we had and we began working together. And I actually was a sponsor for her recent community health event and I look forward to working with her. I did offer to facilitate a meeting between myself, the administration, the city attorney, the council president, and anybody else that it takes to get in the room, to get all of us working on the same page. I said I’ve known Mr. Godbout for a long time, I know him to be a man of honor, and I know him also to be a man of faith, and I think a lot of you guys know that he is too. But, but I’d say that he’s stubborn and he’s got pride, but at the same time, I think that Mrs. Green and I both could be accused of the exact same thing. So, the city’s got a lot of issues facing it and I think that we all have to work collectively on that together. We’re going to go into the budget sessions here in another month and we’re going to have to work together to work on this next budget. So, I think that our residents elect us individually for the traits that we bring to the table, but once they elect us, I think that they expect us to work collaboratively together. Well, not in agreeing on everything, but I think working towards solutions. And I think that we can do that. And I offered, that doesn’t change, that meeting can hap, that facilitated meeting can happen after tonight’s council meeting if that will help. And then the last part, as far as my administration goes, is that Mrs. Green also has said, not several times, that she felt that folks on my staff had treated her wrong or biased or without respect. And so, my deputy mayor, Mike Reddy, who serves as my chief of staff, also sent out an email to Mrs. Green asking, you know, that if there’s anybody that’s on our staff that you think has treated you improperly, unfairly, biased, race, gender harassment, whatever, let him know. We also, all of our employees have to go through an anti-discrimination policy, sexual harassment policy, so on and so forth. And we included copies of that. So, if there’s anybody that’s on our staff that is treating Mrs. Green differently or whatever, we certainly want to do that. So the deputy mayor has reached out to facilitate that type of meeting and, you know, and I stand behind him on that too. So at the end of the day, I just, and I’m not just saying this because all of you guys are here, I’m saying this because this has kind of bubbled to the surface over the last couple of council meetings and now with it being on the agenda, is that I’ve been around the city for a long time and everybody knows it. I can get along with just about everybody and I can work with just about everybody. So, Mrs. Green and I can work together, we do work together. And it was brought up by somebody from UAW that was here tonight, that said that those of us that have been in office for a while kind of have a responsibility to help those that are new to the office to create the leadership. And I agree with that. And that’s something that we probably haven’t done enough of because at the end of the day, this is local government and with all of our busy lives and children and social media and everything else, not all of us are going to be here forever, not all of us are going to want to do this forever. And there’s not a lot of people lining up to do this work. So, I think that we do have to work together. And I think that, I took a look at that myself, that I think I need to do more to try to help other people develop. And just over, I wasn’t going to bring this up, but just over the weekend, one of the areas that I know Mrs. Green has interest in is working at SEMCOG, the Southeast Michigan Council of Government. She enjoys working at regional levels, collaborative levels, and she has a lot of relationships outside the city of Westland. So I’ve served on the executive committee for SEMCOG for the last, probably the last six, seven, eight years. And I was up for election again this time and I knew that Mrs. Green serves on another committee and she could not serve, she could not run for the executive committee unless she was a delegate of the city or the alternate. Currently, I’m the delegate and my alternate is the deputy mayor. So, I changed the delegate, the delegate is still myself, but I changed the alternate from the deputy mayor to Mrs. Green so that she could run at SEMCOG last week for the executive committee. And she was successful, she’s now on executive committee. She’s not the delegate, but she’s the alternate. And that’s kind of how you get started on the executive committee. So, I know that she’s passionate, I know she’ll do a good job. And at the end of the day, what I told her when she said that she was successful was I said, “It is important for Westland to be at the table.” And I think that knowing that the fact that Westland is still going to be at the table for the executive committee for SEMCOG is good for our city. So, council, council president, sorry for my lengthy words tonight, but I wanted to share that. Thank you.
City Attorney?
Thank you, Council President. I guess I want to address my letter to Councilwoman Green dated March 14th. It, I think because it came out on March 14th in the afternoon is probably why the clerk removed from the website the footnote that’s on the agenda because there was a response given on that date. So it is responding to the issue that was raised as to clarifying the city attorney’s role and as it relates to preventing or addressing biased activity against a member of city council. I went on and explained in this letter, as I’ve done previously, that the city attorney’s obligations arise by charter and law. The Westland City Charter provision is Section 5.12, which says the city attorney shall act as legal advisor to the mayor and the council in matters relating to their official duties. The charter also provides, and I’m not reading, believe me, I’m not reading the whole letter, so I’ll try to paraphrase it to save the audience, but the charter also provides in Section 6.8, that the city council makes decisions and acts through majority vote. So the city attorney does not serve as an attorney for any specific city official’s private interests. And this is further clarified in the Michigan Rules of Professional Conduct, which applies to licensed attorneys and at MRPC 1.13A, and the rules of interpretation that the State Bar of Michigan puts out, RI-254, which says, “The attorney-client relationship exists with respect to the lawyer and the city council, but not between the lawyer and any individual city council members.” So this is the understanding in which the role of the city attorney applies to the questions that was asked. And this is not unsimilar to a question that Councilwoman Green asked in March of 2018 and which was responded to in April of 2018, where I cited the same charter provision and tried to point out that in order for a request to be made by the city council, it’s necessary for a majority of the city council to agree to make that request. So the same issue, slightly different angle, but sort of what are the duties of the city attorney was addressed back last year about this time. And it was also addressed in a new council legal training session that was held in January of 2018, where the three new council members attended with myself and members of my office. So the city attorney’s duties are to the client, which is the city, and not to an individual officer or elected official. Hopefully, that clarified the role of the city attorney with respect to the questions that Councilwoman Green put forward. That summarizes my letter. Thank you, Council President.
Begin council comments with Councilman Londa.
Thanks, President Godbout. Start off by thanking Sue Hoff for running our meeting tonight, did a great job from the clerk’s office. And also wanted to congratulate the folks at the Westland Library in signing their first collective bargaining agreement with SEIU. I just want to congratulate everyone involved. I know you guys all worked really hard and it was a long process, so. Also wanted to just speak, we had some ordinance and resolutions on our council agenda, the past few agendas. I’d like to see, I know I’ve talked to the city attorney and the President Godbout about this, I’d like to see the ordinance brought before city council in the near future as the war on brothers approaching on the political signs that we talked about last year, about updating our political ordinance signs, political signs for ordinance. I know about a year ago, we talked about it, we talked in our study session about limiting it to 60 days before an election. This should give ample time for any candidate that’s running for office. Glad the mayor brought up recycling as we continue to look for ways to, for a more sustainable curbside recycling program. In the changing market, I’d like to see the administration take a look at the possibility of a regional recycling facility. I actually spoke with the mayor and I believe you’ve talked with the council of Western Wayne, and you guys are looking at this option if so. If you could just keep the council updated, I’d appreciate it. And then SEMCOG was mentioned, I attended a local government finance 101 road funding workshop at SEMCOG along with my colleague, Councilwoman Green. For those that don’t know what SEMCOG is, it’s the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. Pretty big agenda, it was review of state and federal revenue sources for road funding, distribution of road funds from the state under Public Act 51. They talked about the preventative maintenance, they talked about how a local elected officials play a role in selecting federal projects. And then they, we talked collaboratively about local and regional solutions to funding the road challenges. We also were presented with Governor Whitmer’s executive budget briefing that she presented to a Joint House and Senate Appropriations Committee meeting in Lansing. So, we kind of got it hot off the press as she was presenting in Lansing, we were looking at it right there in the office. So, also, congratulations to Councilwoman Green, I didn’t know about the election, so that’s great, on SEMCOG. And it was nice to see some more road and other infrastructure projects on our agenda tonight. I’m sure we’ll see a lot more as we continue to move into our five-year plan. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank Plant Moran that’s here tonight and thank them for the great news they passed along. They sent us an email, I’m just going to go ahead and read the email. It’s pretty short. “A few weeks ago, the Michigan Government Finance Officers Association held their spring seminar in East Lansing. One of the sessions facilitated by representatives from Treasury was about Public Act 202 corrective action plans. The city of Westland was one of only two case studies in the state of Michigan that they shared as a...” they shared as examples of plans that were deemed to be best-in-class. They included the city's name and All-American City logo on the screen with bullet points summarizing the details of the plan. This was a great spotlight for the city and such deserving recognition of the hard work that went into putting a well-thought-out and comprehensive plan together." So, they congratulated us for our role in developing, refining, and/or supporting the plan, and to our finance team led by Steve Smith and Dan Block for their leadership and effort on this. So, thank you from myself and from the council for all your efforts, and thank you to the finance team and administration for all you guys done, and we'll continue to work on that plan. Thank you.
Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. I'd like to start by thanking the students who came in tonight to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd also like to thank everyone who came out to support me tonight, just to name a few, the UAW, Michigan United, many Westland residents, residents from neighboring cities, Detroit, Canton, Garden City, who are keeping your eyes on what's going on here at our, at our, Annie Inkster, yes ma'am, that is keeping an eye on what's going on in the community, or particularly at these meetings. You have no idea how much your support means to me, you have no idea, so thank you. I'd like to just mention Sue, for the Westland resident, thank you for your comments. I wanted to state, just for the record, that Sue actually, as the mayor stated, she's not on city council. Sue works under our clerk, Richard LeBlanc, and Richard could not be here tonight, so Sue was filling in for him, but since I've been on city council, Sue has been, I mean, she's an employee, but she has been really kind, and so have many, many others. So, I didn't want to, because she's up here, I would never, I actually have a really good relationship with Sue, and she's normally, she has the luxury of not having to sit here with us on the first and third Monday, so, thank you for being here tonight. And then, just also, too, there are people, I will say, and I would never speak their names, but there are a lot of people within the city of Westland who have reached out to me, employees, but that's the key word, they're employees, they can be fired. So, some of them are not in agreement with what's going on, but due to the fear of retaliation, they've remained silent, and I actually encourage them to remain silent. I've had Westland business owners who saw that video, the video surprisingly, which was a surprise to me, has been viewed almost 9,000 times in these last two weeks. I've had Westland business owners, men and women, reach out to me and, you know, share how much they think it is absolutely unacceptable, but they too, you know, in wanting to help, and wanting to, what can I do, you know, they fear retaliation from the city. So, I don't want it to, this is not a Westland thing, and hopefully, in time, we will all get beyond this, but the bottom line is, whether people wanted me to sit here or not, the community did, and I'm going to continue to do my job and stand up for myself and this community. I wanted to read, as Attorney Fowleson stated, it is a two-page letter, I'm going to read one paragraph from this letter, so that there's no misconception in terms of my interpretation. I want the community to know why I stated what I said at the beginning of the meeting, I would never set out to make somebody intentionally look bad. But his paragraph states, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, "In consideration of the relevant charter provisions and rules, it follows that a city attorney does not owe his duty to individuals, but rather to the city as a whole. The city attorney does not have the duty to investigate allegations without city direction. There are many matters that the city attorney does not address, such as questions of policy, business decisions, and various types of complaints. However, on occasion, such matters present legal questions, which the city attorney may answer as directed by the mayor or city council. But that does not change the fact that the city attorney owes his duty to the client, the city, and not to an individual officer or elected official. The city attorney's role is to act upon the direction of the city and to provide legal advice." So, if I somehow gave the impression that his letter did not tell, I didn't just read what I said at the beginning of this meeting, then I stand corrected, but I believe I stated exactly what this paragraph says, so I just wanted to state that for the record. I also wanted to, the mayor has already left tonight, but I wanted to speak to the appointment to SEMCOG, and thank the mayor, and I have thanked him for that. Sitting on the SEMCOG committee is one that I asked to sit on when I was elected, or sworn in, in January of last year. That is one of many commissions that I was told that I would not be allowed to sit on after I voted against the council president, that is what the mayor told me. He would not let me sit on a commission for the first year of my term because of the way that I voted, and here it is, a full year later, I didn't sit on a commission for my first year, and I've made it known at several meetings, that I still have not been able to sit on a commission. So, in terms of the SEMCOG appointment, I sincerely thank the mayor, because at some point, we're going to have to get beyond this, I have three years left, and he may decide to run again. So, this is not productive, it is very exhausting, it is depressing, because this community out of 85,000 people chose the seven of us to stand up and speak up for them, and this is what's going on. So, in terms of the SEMCOG appointment, I just want to clarify, and I have thanked the mayor, the appointment took place on Thursday of last week, I was planning to go, I was on my way, I was on 94, headed down to the SEMCOG meeting after being told that I couldn't sit on the committee by SEMCOG because I was not a delegate or an alternate. As I'm riding down 94, the mayor called me and said, hey, do you want to sit on this committee? So, I'm 15 minutes from Kobo Hall, the mayor agreed to withdraw himself, so I could apply, I could nominate myself to see if I get elected by the people in Wayne County. That is what occurred. Once the mayor withdrew himself, I was able to nominate myself on Thursday, and I got the votes. So, I'm very appreciative to be able to serve in this capacity, because I have been attending SEMCOG meetings all year long, because I couldn't sit on any commissions in the city of Westland. So, I'm very, very grateful for that. As it relates to the statement in terms of the financial contribution that the mayor made to my health event, which I, I believe, if you're going to tell the truth, tell the whole truth, what happened with that health event, and I was not planning to tell anybody, planning to speak this, because we did reach a resolution after, long after, like a month and a half later, but what happened with that health event, I don't even know if the people on council know, because I didn't speak to them about it. I took it upon myself to bring in as many health systems as I could to the city of Westland, access to get people who don't have healthcare to sign up for Obamacare, or affordable healthcare, and not a dime was spent, costed the city of Westland, I fundraised everything. I fundraised from politicians, I fundraised from organizations, the health facilities, they came in, they did blood pressure, they did health registration, they did everything. The tax department from the county even came in and set up a table, and from what I was told, that had never been done here in the city of Westland. What occurred originally with that, me even taking the, being proactive to try to do something more than just sit here on council, the mayor was going to charge me $1,250 to hold that meeting here at city hall. I have the emails, I had to fill out an application to host it here, so for probably about, once I asked for the space, because I'm an elected official, and the banquet rooms are nice, and this is city hall, I should be here, the mayor said he was going to charge me $1,250, that's in addition to me having to raise money for the food, the materials, everything else, pay the photographer, and everything else that we had to do. So, of course, I was upset about that, not because I didn't think it would, not only because I didn't think it was fair, but because I knew of multiple organizations, some who are friends, family, different organizations that the city has good relationships with, they come in here and they get the space for free, and I talked to some of them. So, I had the answers before I asked the question. He was going to charge me $1,250, and so, when I told him that I know of organizations that the city waived that fee for, he still would not waive it, so that is where the disagreement came from, and it was about a 30-plus day period of, you're going to have to pay it, and I'm not paying it. So, then, we ended up, just on a humbug, I happened to be at city hall, the mayor pulled me aside and asked me if I had a moment to talk, and it turned into actually a pretty long discussion that we had, and we did come to a meeting of the mind, so what I agreed to pay was $300, because there were people who were going to come in here on the weekend to open it up, open up the, so I don't mind that, I don't expect anything for free, but you're not going to charge me, like I'm coming in here to have a Tasha party, and I'm bringing in healthcare for the city. So, the mayor, I ended up agreeing to $300, the mayor made a contribution to the event of 200, so the wash was 100, but that was long after, when the mayor dug in, and I dug in, and he was adamant that he was not, he was not going to waive the fee, I said, well, you know what, I'm going to go and file a civil rights complaint then, because I can prove that you not only have not charged some of these elected officials to have meetings that does not benefit anybody in the city but them, but there's other organizations that you've waived it for, too, and then, after that, we hashed it out, and I ended up paying $300 to cover the expense of the people who covered it. So, and I appreciate that, I don't want anything for free, I'm here to work for the residents, but you're not, I'm not going to be dogged out, I don't want anything extra, but you're not going to treat me unfairly and get away with it, I'm not going to take that, it is not in my DNA to allow myself to be treated like that, especially when I know I haven't done anything wrong, it's not right. So, I could go on a tangent in terms of what happened with the email from Deputy Reddy as well, in terms of the email I got from him last week about, it has been brought to my attention, and I had to remind him, this has been brought to your attention over the last 12 months, go back through the information I've already provided to you. So, here's the bottom line, I want to work with everybody, and they are going to have to accept the fact that I'm not going anywhere, and I'm going to be here proudly. So, at some point, I'm hoping we get along, but what needs to occur is, there are seven of us, anything can pass this council with four votes, we just saw that tonight, I voted no, six other people voted yes. If, you cannot control my vote, you cannot control my voice, you will not retaliate against me because I don't do what you want me to do, how you want me to do, I am an adult, and I don't expect anything different, or walk out of here mad because somebody votes differently than I do, it's not fair, and I'm not going to allow myself to be treated like that, and I'm not going to sit here miserable, or walk out and feel like, to the point where I want to quit, because actually, what it does, it's like taking a vitamin, it makes me even more adamant to stand up for myself even more, so it's not going to happen. And I just say to people, there's a lot of people who say, all politicians are crooks. All politicians are not crooks, let me tell you where the honest politicians are at, they are sitting at home, on the couch, because they could not fundraise, you didn't remember what their name was, so you voted for the name that you knew, you voted for the people who vote against you every chance they get, that's who you voted for. So, when you talk about people, all politi, no, we're not, I definitely, I definitely don't fit that bill, so I would encourage people to research before you vote, and this is what tells you, not the endorsements, a lot of these endorsements, some of them come because you know somebody who knew somebody. Look at how we vote, that tells you what, who we are, and what is important to us. Stop voting based on incumbency, and that goes for me, too. If I sit here for four years, and I disrespect you, I won't take your calls, I don't help you with anything, and you turn around and vote for me again in four years, you deserve exactly what you get, because I would have shown you in four years what you can expect from me. So, it is your, you make the call on who represents you, and I encourage you all to do it. Thank you.
I just want to thank everybody that was involved in the Taylor Towers refinance, I know it was a long, complex deal, and has a lot of layers to it, so I want to thank everybody for all the time they spent on getting the refinance through, it's a big deal to the city. So, thank you to all those that had a hand in it. I also want to thank the council for moving forward with the adoption of the new fireworks ordinance to limit the amount of days that be up to shoot off fireworks, I know we're going to all be glad once that comes out this summer, for sure. And I, too, agree with Councilman Londo, I'd like to see us move forward with the political sign ordinance as quickly as possible, get it in front of us before the political signs start coming out. So, that's it for me tonight, thank you.
Councilman Hart.
Wow, what to say that hasn't been said already. Councilman Londo took all of my talking points, as usual, when he proceeds me. Again, thanks for all the work on the Taylor Tower, I knew that was a lot of work and a lot of heavy lifting, and again, just like Councilman Hammond took my last point, thanks for moving forward the fireworks ordinance, I know that's going to give me a lot of relief, it's going to give my dogs a lot of relief, it's also going to get a lot of my veteran brothers and sisters some relief, so it's a little bit much. I guess, kind of address the elephant in the room, we've all been kind of privy to a big outpouring of emotions, and a big outpouring of how everyone feels, and I really, really, really hope we get this taken care of real soon. This is a room where we provide, we run a service, we're supposed to conduct business, and all of you, the residents, expect us to conduct business, and I really don't want this to turn into another episode of daytime television, sometimes it feels that way, and I just want it to go, and I know in order for that to happen, it's got to happen over here on this side, and I really hope that, you know, my colleague, you know, works with the administration, everybody, and gets this put behind us. Nobody wants to see, nobody wants to be felt left out, everybody wants to feel like they have a voice, myself included, I speak a little bit quieter than some of my colleagues do, but our voices are all valid at the same time. So, I hope we get back to business, doing good things, and keeping our eyes focused on doing work. Thank you.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yeah, just a couple notes real quick, we had a town hall event on Saturday, it was at John Glenn, if you missed it, there'll be another event, but it was with Congresswoman Talib, Senator Erica Geis, and State Rep Coleman, I know at least three, four of the council members were there, really good discussion, I got a little nervous at one point, these are all Democratic representatives, and somebody started speaking and introduced themselves as a Republican chair, so, but everything was kept really respectful, I was impressed, and there was a lot of good discussion there. If you missed that, Congresswoman Talib's having another coffee hour this Thursday, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., so that's a good amount of time for her to talk to quite a few people, and that's going to be in Garden City at the Maplewood Community Center, the address for that is 31735 Maplewood. And then, there was some talk about some vacancies on some of the committees that make recommendations to council, if we can get an update on some of those committees within the next meeting or two here. It's been quite a few months since we've been putting out the call for residents to join some of these committees, so, if you, mayor, you could give us an update on that soon, and then, also, congratulations, Tasha, on your appointment to SEMCOG.
I'd like to start this evening by thanking Kendall Davis and Tiana Gilder, the two students from Adams Elementary, for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thanks, Sue, for filling in for Richard this evening. I'd also like to congratulate Sue Leonard, the Wayne Westland Distinguished Young Woman Scholarship Program winner, and all of this year's participants in the program. This was the 52nd year of the program in our communities, and they believe it's the second-oldest distinguished young woman program in the nation, and this year, it was fitting that it was held on International Women's Day. Charity Poker is once again open at Westland Municipal Golf Course on Merriman, just south of Cherry Hill. The poker room has been remodeled and is open Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., and I would encourage everyone to come out and support the local charitable groups that work the poker room. Also like to congratulate the Wayne Memorial Zebra Marching Band for finishing first place in the Detroit St. Patrick's Day Parade, as well as, congratulations, go to Barb Markham. in the Detroit St. Patrick's Day Parade, as well as, congratulations go to Barb Markham, our Director of Senior Resources. Barb was recognized by the Senior Alliance and was given the 2019 Meritorious Service Try and address some of the comments that were made this evening, in regards to the agenda that some of you have, that has the item that was not on the published agenda, that was, only went out to council members in our preliminary packet. When the letter was received from the city attorney's office, it was pulled off of that sheet. So, I know that Councilwoman Green, in her comments, said she never intentionally wants to make somebody look bad. In light of the fact that several of you had that, I can only assume that, that came from one of the council members that went out with the preliminary packet. As you noted, it was not on the bottom of the published agenda on the city website. The, at the last council meeting, and again, tonight, Councilwoman Green made comments about her perceived ongoing bias, retaliation, belittling, and bullying by me. This is not the first time the councilwoman has verbally spoken out against me at a council meeting or a study session, and I have not previously responded. She also indicated that she did not want to be treated better than anyone else on council, but in fact, she does want special treatment. I have afforded the councilwoman Green special consideration, and you only have to look at tonight's meeting, as well as go back and review the last council meeting, to see that I allowed Councilwoman Green special treatment. There was a motion on the floor and support to approve the consent calendar. Councilwoman Green asked to be recognized at that time, which I did. The councilwoman then went on to bring up her claims. The councilwoman was clearly out of order, as her comments were not germane to the approval of the consent calendar. Rather than call the councilwoman out of order, which she was, I decided to let her continue and allowed the city clerk at the last meeting to clarify what's in our policies and procedures. After the council meeting, some of my colleagues asked why I didn't call the councilwoman out of order. I made the decision, much like tonight, to allow her to continue, because I felt it would have been less disruptive to the meeting to allow her to continue than to call her out of order. Councilwoman Green has also indicated that I have intentionally left or turned off her microphone. Our system is not perfect. When any council member wishes to be recognized, they push the button on their microphone, and a light flashes on the control panel, so they know they want to speak on an issue. I then have to turn on the microphone, so that it is live. When a council member asks the mayor, city attorney, or director a question, I turn on their microphone to respond, and generally turn off the council member's microphone, so I can see the next time they want to be recognized. I'm not a mind reader, I don't know if additional questions will be asked or not, but our policies and procedures states that no member of council shall speak a second time on an item under discussion until other council members wishing to speak on that item have been heard. Many times, other council members have asked to be recognized, and I try to recognize them in the order that I see their light come on the control panel. In reviewing several meetings from the past 15 months, I found several occasions, occasions that the microphone for other council members, the mayor, the city attorney, were inadvertently not turned on, either because I inadvertently failed to timely turn on the microphone, or they inadvertently turned off their microphone because they hit their button while they were moving or adjusting the microphone. The councilwoman has now requested special treatment, and that I leave her microphone on at all times during the meeting. If that were to occur, which it did this evening, I would not be able to see when she wanted to be recognized, like every other council member, to speak on an issue. Running meetings of any sort is not an easy task. We have several different formats in which we conduct city business, council meetings, open study sessions, and closed study sessions. Over the course of the years I have been council president, I believe I have tried to be consistent with protocol when conducting the meetings, following the same format regardless of the setting. The fundamental role of a chairperson is to maintain order at a meeting. Council members who are serving now, or have served with me over the years, understand that minimally, they need to be recognized. At a study session, that can be a wag of a pencil, a finger, or a nod, looking at me, so that I know that they want to weigh in on an item, and that everyone gets a chance to weigh in, before one of their colleagues gets another opportunity to again, address this topic. This is nothing new. Council meetings and study sessions have been conducted like this for years, long before I became elected. I've called the councilwoman, I have called the councilwoman out of order at a study session for speaking without asking to be recognized. During the study session on February 4th, the councilwoman had originally been recognized and previously spoken on an issue of a proposed contract. Councilman Johnson then asked to be recognized and spoke to the issue. When Councilman Johnson completed his questions, the councilwoman started asking follow-up questions without asking to be recognized, and without providing the others opportunity to be recognized. Twice during the February 11th study session, the councilwoman brought up the subject of what occurred at that, the previous study session on February 4th, and went on at great lengths to indicate she would speak when she wanted. It's unfortunate that one of my colleagues wants to make this an issue, none of this pertains to city business, and council has more important items to deal with than to spend time squabbling over procedural protocol. Is there a motion to adjourn?